Hey, you guys, I'm in charge of my desk.
She said don't believe everything you hear.
She said she expects a state dinner after this.
All right, it's six thirty according on time, so we're gonna have some order. And then have our home meeting session, which is about Rick Dotson and pledge allegiance to my Chinese class.
Ladies and gentlemen, Father God, I thank you for every day you give us, Father. I thank you for life and life development that you give us every day, Father. Father, first and foremost, everything we do will be pleasing to you tonight, Father, and be the best interview for children of Overton County, Father. I thank you for all you do for us every day, and thank you for healing a friend, Julie Poston, getting her back home safe this week. Lord, I just thank and praise you for that. As you give us one out of the building, for us to see this name, we pray. Amen. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for May thirteenth?
It's approved.
Second. Motion was made by Mitch and second by James. All in favor? Do we have any additions or deletions from our proposed agenda tonight?
I make a motion to add approval of our twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Any reading of this?
No, second. A second. All in favor? Add that to the... Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for tonight? You'll have to forgive me, I'm moving this. Thanks to William. Awesome work, having nice meals right now, thank you. Right now, we've had a request for Mr. Michael Bowden to address the board, so we're gonna give Mr. Bowden five minutes to address this.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you all had a great day today.
Ready?
Yes.
I'm here as a follow-up to last meeting. Two days after I appeared before you, the same thing happened to my grandson. Unmerciful bullying so bad, my daughter had to come pick him up from school. This tells me that what was done the first time has worked. The same individuals perpetrated the act. I immediately texted Dr. Holman, and he said he was already talking with the vice principal. He said it would be handled. It may be, but I didn't think it would stop this group. Just to prove my point, one of the perpetrators had tried to befriend my grandson's mother on Facebook, so they're not stopped. These children are not being brought up to have respect. I had no, not informed, I was not informed of what has been done to protect my daughter and my grandson until late last week. I had a conversation with Dr. Holman, and he did give me some, some things that may work. I understand there are things in place, but I will have to see if they will work. My concern is still well-founded, considering the same student that stated that she would be going to kill and burn my daughter is now in the same school building with her, starting August first. Her threat is a Class II felony terrorism threat. That's serious, very serious. I do not think the high school will do a very good job in protecting her or my grandson. I based my statement on watching the students while I was a teacher's aide in the high school. Same principal, same group of people. There's a systemic problem in all of the schools that I have been in, in this county, of bullying. I have worked in this county, and there needs to be some training done with teachers and impressing what the consequences are gonna be if you do it. I have given ample time to work on this, and I will be at the next meeting to discuss anything further I find out. And I will be at every meeting until I'm satisfied that there is a solution to this issue. The law goes into effect on July first. It takes away the license of any student who is found to cyberbullying or bullying for one year. This just passed, and it goes into effect. I received news bulletin of it. The state has sent me the form to file a grievance against the board and the schools involved. And I will use my rights as an Overton County citizen and a citizen of the state of Tennessee. But I've already had a conversation with them. That's all I have to say. I don't even need any more time. I think I got my point across.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a month.
At this time, I'd like to welcome our prince from Putnam County, Miss Craven, Miss Ramsey. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We'd like to visit you sometime. Okay, we'll go into our executive action items. We'll do these, there's two, we will go together, and then they'll know. Approve the following school nutrition year renewal for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Selena's dairy and fruit products from Perrier Farm Dairy Incorporated. Ice cream from Murphy's Beer, pure milk. Grease removal and lime jading from New Zealand City Environment. Pest control service for universal termites, pest control. Fire suspension service for haze fire protection. Hood cleaning service from Upper Comble Hood Service. And number two is approving the following school nutrition year for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year under Upper Comble's regional buying group. Food items being from U.S. Foods, eight million, one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Non-food and chemistry items being from the American Paper and Twine Company at five hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Do I...
I like that motion. Second.
Motion made by Rick and second by Mitch. Are there any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed?
We need to roll call.
Probably need to roll call.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
Ricky Dotson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Mitch Stonezacher?
Yes.
Nine four zero, opposed, motion passes.
Now, our consent agenda items. We'll do all these together also. And most of these are in your attachment two or three. Number one is one forty-one fiscal year twenty-five, general purpose school revision, number nine. Number two is one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, title one A revision, number seven. Number three is one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, title four revision, number seven. Number four is one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, IDEA part B revision, seven. Number five is the one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, IDEA. Preschool revision, number seven. Six, one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-first. C, CLC, remaining funds revision, number one, seven. One forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, AA, LN, K through eight revision one. For eight is one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five. Partnerships, seismic change revision three. Number nine is one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, CTE, purpose, basic revision, number six. Number ten, one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, IDEA, part B revision eight. Number eleven, one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, IDEA preschool revision eight. Twelve, one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-first, CCLC, remaining funds revision one. Thirteen is one fifty-six fiscal year twenty-five, education capital project revision one. And then number fourteen is the Livingston Academies, FBLA overnight trip to the National Leadership Conference, June twenty-seventh through July the third in Anaheim, California. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion is made by Mitch. Are there any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, let's bring in our new business then. The first on our new business is to appoint interim director of schools beginning July the first. Do I hear, well, before we do, I'll take it now that we have talked to Ms. Miller and Ms. Dillon. And Kim Dillon said that she would be willing to do this. They have been acting, I guess, as the assistant for a few years now. And Kristy Miller said she would support her every way she could. So, do I have any, just, I guess, recommendations on that?
I'd like a motion to appoint Kim Dillon.
I'll say okay. Ben has made a motion to appoint Kim Dillon in the second by Mitch. Are there any discussions? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right, we will inform Kim Dillon that we will issue this in July first. And hopefully, shortly thereafter, we will talk about the director. I think we have two or three applications over here. Okay, consider approving the following letter of retirement of Angelina Moshi. That is attachment four one. Do you hear a motion to...
I think that motion.
Motion made by Mitch. A second by Shirley. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Do we share a happy retirement? Number two, consider approving, number three, consider approving the following letters of recognition. Brandon Cross, Mark, uh, Grant Brown. Okay. McCauley Sims, Erica Miller, Shaylen Miller, Joseph Todd Wright, Sandra Bowden, Paula Smith, Derek Colton, as the OC in the school of girls' soccer head coach, and Jared Rutter as the Overton County softball head coach. Do I hear a motion to accept these? Motion made by James.
Second by Ashley.
Second by Ashley. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, consider approving the fiscal year twenty-six consolidated application improvement for the IDEA and the ESEA school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
I like that motion. Second.
Second by Mitch. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, consider approval of the autistic and behavior service LLC agreement to provide emotional behavior assessment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Motion made by Ashley and second by James. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, six is consider the second reading of approval of the following board policies. Policy five point four oh three, drug and alcohol testing for employees. And five point five oh one, complaints and grievance, and that was attachment number seven.
Do I hear a motion? My motion.
Motion up in.
I'll second.
Second by Shirley. All in favor? Any discussions on this? This is just a second reading, okay. And number seven was the approving the annual meeting agenda. All of you should have gotten one of these. It's always the second Tuesday unless something's coming up, which is on October, then it'll be the third Tuesday. So, do I hear a motion to accept that?
I like that motion.
Motion over here.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? And against our special resignation, we have Jennifer here from OCEA.
I'm gonna give y'all a summer break for me. I really have nothing to say except I hope everybody's having a great summer and pay attention, because it'll be over soon.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Yes, ma'am.
I like that motion.
And opposed, or, I guess he made a motion, he made second by...
Yeah.
Okay, Ben. Okay, we'll just go straight into our work session. Items for discussion. We have someone, Ashley, Alicia Ritter, is she here?
Yes.
All right. She's here to talk to us about the family life curriculum, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I would love to have talked back there. So, this is Beth Aaron with Global Pregnancy Clinic, and she does the SRA, which is sexually risk...
Sexual risk avoidance education.
Yes. She's gonna help me out here. So, we have been in contact. We had sent Dr. Holman an email, Jean, an email, and Rachel. This is in all pretty much surrounding counties.
Yes.
And it's taught through lifetime wellness, which Kelly Quals teaches at the high school. So, I'm gonna let, this is Beth, and she teaches this curriculum. She comes up here, does this curriculum, so I'm gonna let her share just a short over there.
Sure, well, I guess I would start with, do you have any questions right off the top of your head before I can start? It's not, it's not a long, it's not a long spiel. So, like she said, of course, the pregnancy clinics of Putnam County, we also serve White County, Jackson County, DeKalb County, and then our, our hope would be to also serve Overton County. We have, we, I mean, we have people in this community who support our clinic. Doctor Chris Knom is our overseeing physician, and he works in this, in this community. And so, for a couple of years now, they've sort of, you know, a couple of people have been asking, like, hey, what do we need to do to get you in Overton County? And so, we just sort of, you know, looking how we can get that on our calendar, kind of making that push. So, when we say sexual risk avoidance education, that's the, the new way of saying abstinence education. We focus on the whole person, healthy relationships, long-term relationships, delaying sex until marriage. We talk about consent. We talk about, you know, those different components of whole person health. All those things that tie into just the whole person, not so much just saying, don't have sex until you're married. We, you know, make it a, there's a bigger picture there, and we make sure that the kids understand that. The program, we, we have a program for middle schoolers that's a little less in-depth. It covers more, being safe on the internet, social media, that sort of thing. And then we have a program more targeted for high school students that covers just a broader range of those same topics. The topics we cover are closely aligned. We can crosswalk those with state standards that already exist for lifetime wellness and for family life curriculum for middle school as well. So, if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer the curriculums that we, we use. We don't, we don't, you know, make up our curriculum. We have purchased two specific curriculums that are approved in other counties in the state of Tennessee. Evidence-based curriculum that is backed up by statistics and data. We're not just making up numbers and pulling things off the internet. So, we have copies of that stuff here today as well, if you're interested in looking at that.
What do you do in middle school? What the hell, how long do you do?
What, yeah.
Do you go into the classroom?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we try to keep the classes, you know, a typical classroom. Some, some schools, we have to accommodate multiple classes at one time. But in an ideal situation, we would have a typical classroom full of students, you know, no more than twenty-five or thirty at a time, as much as we possibly can. It's usually for middle school during a science or social studies class, so some counties do have a health-specific class in their curriculum, so we catch the kids in that, in that classroom. And any, any class that is required for all students, make sure that we get all students, if that makes sense.
Except for ours, it would be at the high school as far as lifetime wellness classes, what were you looking at? Nine graders. And it's how, four?
Yeah, so for high school, it's four, four days. As long as you guys have forty-five minute periods, is that correct?
An hour.
And so, about four, four fast periods. So, usually I, I would see a classroom Tuesday through Friday in the same week. Does that make sense?
And I'll share just a little bit. I can't quote those statistics that I sent you all in the email right off the top of my head. I'm gonna share just a little of the medical side of it. Sexually transmitted infections are high at this point. Among them, Global Pregnancy Clinic has been offering some testing, doing some things, and they're seeing a lot of overcountings coming down through there. I, of course, also work in the emergency room at the hospital, and I see a lot of that. So, that was kind of, Doctor Knom reached out to me just to see if we might could try to help get this started. So, that was where I come from as far as health and nature. I'm happy with that.
Our goal is to get information to these kids from a reputable trusted source. They're getting lots of information off TikTok, different, you know, different avenues on the internet. And so, I hear a lot of, hear a lot of myths. I hear a lot of questions about, well, what about this? And I heard this on TikTok, and what about that? And, you know, most of what they're getting is incomplete at best, completely false at worst. And so, just giving them access to good information is really the goal.
How does some of the other counties go about this? I'm like, what grade level do you start in, Bill?
Sure, no, we usually see, so it's, if it, based on high school. So, if high school students are having lifetime wellness in ninth grade, we see they're middle schoolers in seventh grade. If there's, if we have lifetime wellness in tenth, we see them in eighth grade. So, we have kind of a gap here in between, so seventh and ninth, or eighth and tenth.
Do you, do, does the principal require you to give permission to the parents?
Absolutely, that's a, that's a state requirement. So, the way the state law is written, parents have the opportunity to opt out. All of the counties I serve require opt-in. And that's on a county-by-county basis, whatever coordinated school helps ask for. And that's a, that's a, that's a great safeguard in terms of, you know, liability if a student doesn't take the form home. We, we want parents to be informed, we want them to know. We, we started using some of the, like, the app-based parent contact, so like ParentSquare, things like that, to make sure the parents have that information in front of them. But if a student doesn't bring back a permission slip, then they have an alternative assignment that they have to do. Yes.
But this is just supplement, supplement our curriculum that we have now, which we've backed for several years, which is blood and cold health, and this would just be something to...
Sure.
To really, to really boost it and maybe cover some areas that might need some more.
Yeah, and you know what? I never, I never want educators to feel like I'm trying to do their job for them. This is, this is a very niche area that I know very well and that I've been trained in. And so, if I can, if I can come in and help, that's, that's my, my goal. I'm a different, I'm a different voice, I'm an unfamiliar face, and having a conversation about a sensitive topic like this might be a little bit easier with somebody that they don't, you know, they don't know, knows their mom, or, you know, whatever. So, when we're, we're talking through all this, sometimes the teachers will prefer that, you know, an outside person comes in to do that, and that's always the goal. It's never us saying, we can do this better. It's just us saying, hey, this is a service we offer. The people who support our clinic, the people that we see in our clinic, we're all kind of tied into this community together, and so, it's, it's available, and we think it's pretty important. Any other questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
I would like to say to Alicia, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I really appreciate it. Thank you for your willingness.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.
And now, we'll hear some people from the Johnson Control, Jason.
Well, I guess just quick introductions. I'm, my name is Jason Chafin, been Johnson Controls for eighteen years in various roles. Currently, I've been moved into a customer performance specialist role, which is what Chuck James, my predecessor used to do, and he retired. But I'm basically taking that over and taking over his accounts, and so I've been doing that since about March. And since that time, I've been working back and forth with Steve mostly on things that have gone on with Overton County schools. So, that's basically what I'm doing.
I'm Maggie Estelrundey. I've been with Johnson Controls twenty years. And as Jason mentioned, Chuck James and I, we were on the same team, and now Jason and I, we're on the same team. Basically, what we do is we support the performance contract we implemented back in twenty twenty for the district. So, we're seeing these lights here, replacing these lights under the scope of that. It's almost fifty-nine hundred lighting fixtures we replaced, we installed LED lights. Almost seven hundred plus plumbing fixtures, whatever we see in the bathrooms, those were replaced with high-efficiency fixtures. Along with that, we did controls upgrades and stuff, where we can control operating hours for the HVC equipment. So, that's all we did under the scope. So, we submitted this document, five-page document, not sure if you have, or if you had a chance to read, or if you have any questions on that document. Or we can provide an old deal if you would like.
Yeah, and I think Dr. Holman provided, but year three and four savings last month. It's pretty astonishing on what we'd saved on that, the first few years. So, year five is in here too. So, we appreciate y'all, and I know Steve works well with you guys.
Thank you. It was a tremendous savings, tremendous savings. Appreciate it.
So, so far, through year five, we have saved one point three million dollars.
Like, it was a three million dollar loan from the state at one percent. So, if you look at the twelve years, I mean, you'll recoup your savings easy, so.
Questions?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three is, the state approved the fiscal year twenty-six teachers bonus. The teachers have been promised the two thousand dollars plus their benefits. If you saw it in your packet, who gets it? Did they get the copy of that? Did I just say that?
I didn't.
Okay. If you notice that, in front of the video, you know. In other words, you have to be a teacher, you have to be in the classroom or be employed for a hundred and twenty years. Correct, a hundred and twenty years.
A hundred and twenty days.
So, sure, sure.
I was employed for a hundred and twenty years, I think I should get it.
And then you have to actually have direct contact fifty percent of the time with the students. So, and Crystal looked over our licensed teachers, and there's about... So and Crystal looked over our licensed teachers and there's about thirty of them that is not, does not meet that qualification. So I guess what we will have to decide, are we going to include those thirty teachers in this two thousand?
Has anybody seen what the other counties around us is doing? Has anybody checked?
Yeah, Crystal has.
Yeah, I have, yes.
What counties?
There's some at all.
I checked with just about all of them and I won't say who specifically is doing what. But one county is only doing the ones that are covered under the state, what we're receiving for them. That's one county. One county has not decided yet what they are doing. And then the others, we have learned are doing all pretty much the same. They're doing the, all of their certified staff, they're including the ones that are not covered and doing the support staff as well. And just covering every one, has a one-time.
Support staff. All the aides.
Yes, all of their full-time staff, that's what most of them have said. As long as they are full-time staff, that they're wanting to go ahead and give it to all of their employees and treat them well.
So if we did all their, it's a one-time expenditure. I mean, if we did all their employees, what would that cost?
So just if we did all of them, including the support staff, it would be four hundred, or I'm sorry, the total would be five hundred and ten thousand. That would be four hun, about four hundred and thirty-two thousand for the classified employees, which is support. And then for the non-considered teacher category, it would be about seventy-eight thousand of that. But the total is about five hundred and ten thousand.
Be five hundred more than what the state's giving us or?
Yes, five hundred thousand more.
Yes, that would be what we would be at if we did everyone.
And that's like the, the teachers assistants.
Everybody, let's grab everybody.
The student service, all the E A's.
And if we just did the licensed teachers?
And if the thirty-two appliance room teachers?
Thirty-eight thousand, certainly, yes.
Something to think about.
I'd like to see if we could do it across the board, I mean, I don't know, we don't know where we find what the budget is this year.
I feel like that we will, I feel confident in saying that we will end this year with a very close to a million dollars. Of course, it's gotten tighter this year since Ezra funds have gone away. And I feel confident that we will close with an additional one million at least.
I'd just like to consider this.
So if you give the teachers two thousand dollars plus benefits, is that, that's what you said, correct? And then you drop down to all full-time support staff? Are we talking the same amount?
Yes, the amounts I calculated were for two thousand dollars across the board, yeah. And that would include their benefits as well, that's including everything.
So would that be on the agenda next, next?
Yeah, we just needed to know kind of which way to go as far as, I'll have to do an amendment because we've already submitted. Yes, that's, I will have to do an amendment because we've already submitted our FY twenty-six budgets. And at that time, we wasn't sure who all we were going to give it to. But it does have to be, we will not receive the revenue until FY twenty-six, so we can't pay it out until the new year. So it has to be FY twenty-six fiscal year. But to go ahead and get it moved and get an amendment to the county commission and approved, if you all kind of just let me know which way to go so I could get an amendment for the next board meeting.
So fiscal year twenty-six, does that not start July first?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Crystal, if we vote to do that, when could we, like, would we go and say then get that out? Because I know that, like, that's a long stretch from June to September, it's very hard. Before they can check.
When will the money come from this?
The board would have to approve our first amendment at our next meeting, that's why we want to hold, go ahead and get it as quickly as possible. But the board would approve it hopefully at the July meeting, an amendment. And then we would give it to the county commission and they can approve it in their August meeting, so possibly August. As soon as, we can be ready as soon as they approve it.
Yeah, that'd be good, if they could, if we could approve it next month and we could pay it out August fifteenth, if it is a long stretch.
It's a very long stretch from June to September.
I did think it shows to all of our employees that we appreciate them.
Thank you, July, August. To close out the year, because that's all of this year's budget. He asked about the reason we paid June, July and August.
Yeah.
Because it's all in this fiscal year budget.
Yes, yeah.
So we will know about what we ended up with and what we might have to pay if we vote on this next month.
Yes, yeah, we can go ahead. I can work up an amendment and get everybody or just the teachers, however you kind of tell which way to go.
Everybody, we're gonna do it.
Everybody.
Everybody.
We'll work on that amendment and bring it to the next meeting.
Just a reminder, we're standing here, still some people behind on their scholarship. General Crystal mentioned that.
I'll ask if I'm behind.
I've got to be there on my desk. There was a couple of years, just to say for sure, so there was a couple of years that when I had gone to pediatrics. That, I think they didn't collect, I think they didn't collect any funds, but they still paid out the scholarship fund during those years. And then there was a little glitch that happened during that time also that I may have to pay. Now.
So have you got, have you got a list tonight we could look at then?
I do have it.
You've been here since I have. And then we have some upcoming meetings, the next one is July the eighteenth, that's not too far away. And the district meeting's going to be in Hickey County this year, that'll be in August.
Good, that's cool.
I think Doctor Holman, he said a few words, and then somebody else, you ladies, we've had the county.
Kayle won't talk.
Yeah, he can say it all.
Before Doctor Holman speaks, in regards to the scholarship, I'm not, I'm not sure if everybody noticed, but Doctor Holman has actually paid a significant amount of those scholarships due to, due to the lack of people paying. So he shouldn't be paying for the things that we've committed to paying ourselves. Some of this may have been passed board members, but I just think that we need to figure out how to make it square with him and get, get this screwed up, so.
I agree.
And compliments to him for, for having the character to do that.
Hey, can we get a copy of the bullying action plans sent to us before the next meeting too?
You're talking about what we're gonna do in order to help.
Yeah, that way when he comes back, we'll get on and go.
One little thing I would like to thank the leadership over, and a couple of those members are here tonight, we're glad to share with us. I tried to get one of the young ladies to speak for us, I thought she was someone that could speak for us, and she declined on that. I, I did want to say one last word or two. I wanted to thank the community for their support and I wanted to say that I've had many situations where difficult decisions had to be made. And each and every time, I kept the students in mind and did what was morally right and by the policy. I also wanted to thank the board for their support over the last four and a half years. We have worked well together and accomplished a lot here at this time. Yes, we have encountered some complications along the way, but we've also accomplished a lot as well. I hope that some of those things can be remembered, things such as surviving the pandemic and concluding numerous prior lawsuits, achieving the Cognia STEM certification, implementing a J R O T C program at L A. And our academics scores were strong until last year. And we did have four reward schools in that, in that period of time. Our chronic absenteeism has decreased substantially and we've implemented online registration to help our parents. We've had two clear financial audits, with the exception of the comptroller investigations from prior years. And we've now implemented a new virtual option for students that will hopefully be of great assistance to several. We've had several that have already signed up for that. I'm sure you'll be learning more about that, we've got a good number signed up for that, not a police could do. You remember, we needed to have eight and we've already got three down for that, so. I cannot thank each of you enough for your support and please remember that I am from Overton County and I'll always want our school system to be successful and reach for the highest levels. If I can ever be of any help, please, you know, thank you.
Mr. Smith, would you want to, just, just observe? Watch if they miss them.
Surely you can say something, she does.
Are we going to adjourn?
You've done a good job.